The nation is divided by the United States of America and two republics which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our world.
Marla, would you do the roll call, please? Mayor Sherry?
Mayor Nicholson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanger?
Here.
Councilmember Durst?
Here.
Espinoza?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wells?
Here.
We have a corner. We will move on down to the public hearing. Item A, transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number ninety-eight from J. H. Casper Oil Company, DBA K's Mini Store Number Two to Stinkers Stores Company Incorporated, DBA Stinker Stores Two Fifteen. Anybody wants to speak on that? Okay. We'll move on down to item B, transfer of ownership for retail liquor license number One Eleven from Monument Enterprises LLC, DBA K's Mini Store Three, to Josh Inc. Company, LLP, DBA Stinker Stores Number Two Twenty-Three. Anybody here for that? Okay. Now we'll move on down to citizens' participation. And this is time, this is, this time is for anybody in the audience that would like to speak for up to five minutes on something that's not on the agenda for tonight. If you'd say your name and sign the paper up there, I'd appreciate it.
My name's Tanya Women, meeting City Council. I would like to praise the city for the Art Beat event. I feel the soul of the city can be seen in their art, their sculpture, their music, and their dance, and this event helped highlight a lot of those areas. It was nice to see people pass the stoplight, see the Strand, the Army Circle Store and Geekish Things. The idea for the Strand is marvelous, for plays, dances, comedies, music events. I vote every day, and I hope many others are doing the same. Scott Hannam had asked for a meeting to speak with me on my concerns about the Rollins Police Department, which I have spoken of many times in the past. We met yesterday with Amy Box, Steve Nicholson, and Troy Palmer. I want to thank them for the meeting. I heard their perspective on various issues, which I would like to share. First is the shooting of Randall Beach in two thousand fifteen by Jared Frakes and Joe Battlestrates. I know him per murderer's name. It was expressed that they feel these officers are innocent and a part of the community, therefore can't be fired for the shooting. I do understand that, but I'm still concerned about the two officers as they were not found innocent. County attorney declined to prosecute, which to me is different than the Declaration of Innocence. I'm still concerned that even when the city declared the conflict of interest, a different city attorney wasn't appointed to the case. I am relieved to know that the officers followed a procedure to come back to work, including drug tests and psychological evaluations. With the Tom Gambling issues, Troy Palmer believes the statement that he sent out did include apology. I didn't read the information that way, and I would have liked a stronger statement to that effect. He did indicate that he would reach out and make sure the woman is still not being bullied, which I really appreciate. The police followed their procedures in regard to discipline, and due to the law that can't be discussed, and I understand that. I do feel that as part of police procedure, any off-duty officer in civilian clothes in an unmarked car should be required to let the department know, for their safety as well as the public's. I know many see police officers, on or off duty, that they are a police officer, and they are required to uphold higher standards. But they are first and foremost human, and any human can make mistakes in judgment. We also discussed the charge regarding curb parking from complaint-driven to site-driven. Troy Palmer explained that this was based on the public discussions in previous council meetings. In the future, I'd like to see more communication to the public when the police decide to enforce an ordinance in force. But Mr. Palmer did say he posted a dynam on Facebook, so he did at least try to tell people that that was coming. I also expressed my concern on police responding to a friend's complaint or someone complaining about a friend. Although I agree all officers should be impartial and take it accordingly, they are human, and there are times even I wouldn't take it a friend or a family, right? But I would like to see something in place to minimize this effect, so it's not perceived that people get away with things just because they're friends of a cop. I do think the police are working to improve, and I hope their time with the radio and the newspaper will help to show and highlight these areas. I appreciate the good police officers we have here, and anything the town can do to make their job better, I wholeheartedly support. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak up? Okay. We have DeBarry?
Members of the council, I'd like to present something here. Each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating history and culture and contributions that, that make, that are made by citizens. I would like to recognize Abe Di Herrera. Abe was a Rollins High School track star, a member of the Carbon County School Board, a member of the Rollins City, uh, City Council, a police officer, and became chief of the department. He attended the University of Wyoming, and he became the first Hispanic United States Marshal in the history of Wyoming. I also would like to recognize at this time Pauline Gonzalez. Pauline was instrumental in starting the Community Action Agency in Rollins, bringing in the Head Start Program. She became the director of the Carbon County Code, served on the Rollins City Council, and worked on getting low-income housing to Rollins. She also worked on, worked with the council and the manager at the time to get our dangerous building program started.
Thank you, DeBarry. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? If not, we will move on down to item B, a proclamation, Cancer Awareness Month. You guys like to come up or have anything to say? No, if you come up to the front. State your name and...
I'm Jan Go Branson, Radiology Manager at the hospital.
And I'm Bob Quest, interim CEO.
Okay. Would you like to read the proclamation, or would you like me to? I was gonna ask if you... Marla, would you come do it, please?
You want me to lead it?
No, I'm good. Okay. Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Memorial Hospital of Carbon County is passionate about women's health in and around the community. And whereas, one in eight American women will be diagnosed with breast cancer at some point in their life. Although rare, men can also get breast cancer, with about one in one thousand men diagnosed annually. And whereas, breast cancer is the most commonly recognized cancer in the nation and is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths among women. And whereas, every woman is at risk for breast cancer, even if she has no family history or risk factors of the disease, and early detection can be an extremely effective tool. Finally, screening mammograms could prevent fifteen to thirty percent of all deaths from breast cancer in women over the age of forty. And whereas, Memorial Hospital of Carbon County encourages all women over the age of forty or those who are higher risk to make their breasts healthy, their breasts healthy a proper priority, and keep up with screening mammograms. And whereas, Memorial Hospital of Carbon County provides local mammography services with state-of-the-art digital imaging equipment located right here in our own community, and features a special screening mammogram event in the month of October. In addition, grant funds are available to any uninsured or underinsured patients to ensure that every woman has the opportunity to have affordable screening. And whereas, ninety-eight percent of all cancer patients survive when the disease is detected early, with over two-point-five million breast cancer survivors within the United States. And whereas, National Wear Pink for Breast Cancer Day is Friday, October eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Now, therefore, I, Stephen S. Nicholson, Mayor of the City of Rollins, Carbon County, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim October eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, as Wear Pink for Breast Cancer Day. I further encourage all residents of Carbon County to wear pink on Friday, October eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, and display pink ribbons throughout the month in recognition of breast cancer awareness in honor of the women who have lost their lives to breast cancer, for those who are now courageously fighting the battle of breast cancer, and for the survivors who have won their own battle. Furthermore, women and men are encouraged to talk to their healthcare providers about regularly clinical breast examinations, get regular mammograms, and practice monthly lifesaving breast self-examinations. And witness, therefore, I have heron set in my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Rollins, Wyoming, to be affixed as fifteenth day, October two thousand nineteen.
Good. Thank you very much. On behalf of the hospital, it's, indeed, we're grateful that the City Council recognizes the importance of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We are particularly pleased that we were able to begin service with a new, a state-of-the-art three-D mammogram unit. This is a huge thing for the community, the county. We're very pleased that this type of screening, which is certainly top of the line, is available. I'm not sure if you're aware, but Wyoming, at this point, ranks forty-ninth out of fifty states in screening mammograms. Our county ranks twenty-third out of thirty-three counties, a lot better, I guess, than our national average. The sad part of this is, as Jan mentioned, most insurance companies, certainly Medicare and Medicaid, provide for a free screening mammogram at least annual. In addition to that, there are state funds that can be available to women in need of additional funding for this. And we just think that the opportunity is there. All of us have mothers, wives, sisters, loved ones, that we want to make sure they're with us for a long time, and we know the benefits of early detection. So this is really an important month. Of the cancers diagnosed in Wyoming last year, breast cancer was at the top of the list. Not the highest mortality, fortunately, because so much has occurred in the last twenty-five years to treat early-detection breast cancer. But it's still a very real, critical issue for women, and, as you mentioned, may occasionally have been within our, within our state and our county. So we thank you for your recognition of this and for the proclamation we're very proud to receive at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Now we'll move on down to City Council reports. First item here, we have Board of Adjustments. That'd be myself, Mayor Nicholson. I have nothing to report on that one. The next one, excuse me, let me back up. We do have a Board of Adjustments meeting tomorrow night at five-thirty here in the council chambers, if anybody wants to attend. I don't believe there's anything on the agenda at this time, but... Then we'll move on down to item B, Cog, and on that one, I don't have anything to report. And we'll move on down to DBA Main Street. Councilwoman Smith?
Yes, thank you. I'll be very brief. We're working on the Halloween program downtown on the thirty-first, I think it is. We're starting preparation for Winterfest for the first week in December. And then to the really cool project, well, we had Art Beat Two, and that was well-received. Even though it was cold downstairs, we had a lot of great participation. And we also introduced two people, our Strand Project, which is, let me kind of explain this a little bit, because I want people to vote, please, and you can vote five times a day. And all you have to do, it's the National Historic Preservation Trust sponsored, it's sponsored by the National Geographic, and you go onto your phones and just put in "Go to Vote" is what it says, "Go to Vote," and it'll pull up your main, main voting, and it tells you what to do and all that kinds of things, and what you're voting for. There's twenty-eight million dollars at the, at the national level that has been set aside. And there are, I can't remember how many projects, what, eight or ten, or something like that, around the nation. So Rollins has a project that is on the national level that we're voting on, and the people who get in the top eight...
There's twenty.
Okay, twenty, thank you. The top eight will be looked at to be able to receive a very large sum of money to help redo their projects. So what we're trying to do is encourage our population and anyone you know to go on and vote for the Strand Theater Project, and hopefully we'll be able to be in that top number so that we can get the money to help do the Strand. So please vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Now we'll move on down to Rollins Planning Commission. Councilman Espinoza?
Yes, Rollins Planning Commission met October eighth, and it was on the zoning map amendments. There was actually eleven of them, and one of them, we, number, number eight, location eight, we couldn't get hold of the owner of the property, which Daniella got hold of them finally. And it was from, we're changing from a R-seventy-five to a C-two, which at this time, they didn't really want to change that until further discussion on their part, so maybe they'll come back and change that to a later date. And so anyway, those eleven zoning map amendments will be brought to the council here soon.
Okay. Thank you, Willis. Next, we'll go on down to Urban Systems Committee. Councilman Sanger?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. And we'll move on down to item five, approved minutes of October first, two thousand nineteen. Regular medium? Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October first, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any questions or comments in regards to those minutes? If not, Marla or Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
No, they're having technical difficulties.
Okay. Online voting is open.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries. You want Epstein? Mayor Nicholson, Epstein.
Thank you. Now we'll move on down to Correspondence and Reports. Item A, City Managers' Report.
Honorable Mayor and Council, just want to take this opportunity to provide some clarification on the Tin Can Hill project. I met with Councilmember Martinez yesterday, and we had a good conversation, and I wanted to share the information with the rest of you, just so we're all on the same page. Going back with the Tin Can Hill area, was identified, as a lot of us know, that used to be residents or on-time residents or had family here, that was a landfill at one time in the city's history, that area. In nineteen seventy-five, when YDOT was looking at the expansion of Cedar Street, some of the area out there in the east end of town, YDOT engineer by the name of Bill Bailey identified the opportunity of that area down there as a stormwater retention area, just because of the natural low spot, and where it sits, all the water that feeds in there is all stormwater runoff, meaning when it rains, people wash their car, all the water comes down, mainly from that middle part of town up, up towards the high school, all that water collects naturally in that area down there. So it was identified nineteen seventy-five as an opportunity for a stormwater retention and a recreational opportunity to provide for the citizens of Rollins. Fast-forwarding, over the years, the city identified that in their master plan, and most recently, it was adopted in January twenty-first of two thousand fourteen on page three dash twenty-nine of the city's master plan, and there's actually a nice artist rendition of what a fishing recreational pond would look like at the base of Tin Can Hill, and this is right out of your master plan book right here, and was adopted by the city council. Moving forward to the spring of twenty seventeen, excuse me, spring of twenty sixteen, I received a phone call by a gentleman named Stephen, or Steve Gale, with the Wyoming Game and Fish Department. And Mr. Gale called me and said that the Game and Fish had a strong desire to provide a fishing opportunity for the citizens of Rollins, as we do not live, we're one of the few communities along the corridor that don't have a river running through our community. Years ago, when I was a child, I'm sure a lot of people around this table remember, we used to fish down at the Kitty Pond, we used to call it, over there by where the road and bridge shop is, next to the railroad tracks. That pond area was created from an outflow of the water tanks off of the west side of Rollins Hill over there, and when they would get an overflow adjustment, they'd drain down some pipes, they'd come down the culvert, build that up, and we had some fish in there. So when Mr. Gale reached out to me, I said, you know, that, that was an old location, he asked me about that. We weren't really too happy about the idea of mixing fishing and kids next to the train tracks. So I had shown him the plan, the city's master plan, of the idea that we've recognized, and he said he'd like to come out for a site visit. They come out in July of sixteen, surveyed the area, they also took water samples of the water down there to collect, and we started, and then we brought this to the city council to entertain the idea of knocking off several birds with one stone. The first and foremost one was stormwater retention. That's what the area serves currently and will serve in the future. And why that becomes important is when the city gets to that magic number of ten thousand population, we're required to have a stormwater retention plan by DEQ. While we're working on several areas, this is one key area. Other areas are on the east boundary of Highland Hills, where there's a large retention of water there in a pond. And then when you start looking down at South Side, the fifty-four-inch storm culvert that collects pretty much all the stormwater on South Side, which terminates in the middle of the fire training ground, and then goes into an open ditch all the way down into the Glen Edition. For those of us that have seen flash flooding, there's been times we've gone to the Glen Edition, and the horses and livestock in there are literally neck-deep in the water that goes down there. So this is just phase one of an overall storm retention plan to address those other areas once we get moving. So as the process went, the city council got behind the idea of developing this. We started to look at some grant money, Game and Fish come to the table with some money, the Wyoming Game and Fish Trust Fund came to the table with some money to look at developing some wetlands further down there, which would be on the south side of the Carbon County Jail, where the inlet comes in. So we've got those in place. A part of the deal, one of the biggest players in this was the Carbon County Commissioners, because as we started looking at the area down there, we didn't own the land. And so we went to the county commissioners and visited with them, told them about the project and the idea of what we wanted to do down there, and they said, you know what? That's a great project, we'd be happy to give the land to the city for that purpose. So we signed a quick claim deed with a two-year timeframe on it, which will expire in November of this year. We've reached out and had conversation with Ashley, and she had sent me an email that the county commissioners are still in favor of providing this land to the city, and I'll be working with her in the coming days to bring a, a new quick claim deed, not only to the county commissioners, but to bring to this body to renew that for the purposes of doing this project. Then somewhere along the lines of this, our pro, a developer took interest in the property adjacent to where we want to do this stormwater retention. And so over the last two years, as you can imagine, any type of development and plan, the plans changed numerous times, of where the development was going to go, the size of the development, or where the, how the roads were going to feed in and out. Throughout this entire process, the city's been working with the developer to try to maximize the potential, not only of their project, but of our project and future development for the city of Rollins by working together and sharing costs wherever we may do that. I know we've, I know there's been a certain level of frustration about not having facts and figures and final numbers with this project. If you go into my office, or you've been into my office, there's a very large set of plans sitting on there. Plans for this project have been delivered, and the planner view process has started as they intend and were for with their project. Now that we know what they are going to build and how we can maximize road usage, sidewalks, potential walking trails, potential areas for dog parks and such, we are working together with them. I can assure you, as of today, none of the money that's been allocated for this project has been expended. The only money that we've put out is through some engineering costs when we're designing the ponds, and we've, since of the stormwater utility, those funds have been paid for out of our utility program to address this stormwater issue. None of those funds have been expended. What we will be doing, now that we know what the developer's doing, and we've been able to leverage some cost-sharing opportunities, as we continue the negotiations and the planner view, we'll be coming to this body and presenting you with some, several options of what you would like to do. And at that time, I know the number-one question has been perpetual maintenance cost. We'll be able to deliver those also, once we determine what options we're looking at for the development down there. First and foremost, whether or not we stock that thing with fish or not, there'll be two ponds there because it's stormwater retention. It's actually, actually less water acreage than there is presently down there for surface area. So with that, we've been working, one of the issues that come up late in the game when we first started... we first started this, we were, the first people we started with was the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, because they regulate all waterways. And so we started down that process in fall of 16, and to declare whether or not that waterway's connected. And what that means is it's a connected waterway, does water from there flow downstream to another river and continue on. So after a lot of talk and permitting process and going through that, we got a determination, and we were set to move forward. With that became all the federal agencies that we were required to get permission from and permitting from. The FAA is not one of them that we are required to have. You look through the process, because it's not a commercial airport, we are not required to do that. Because it's tied to some federal funding, they want to be cooperative partners, in which we are reaching out, and we've been working throughout the summer with the USDA, and now we've had another game biologist and other people working on recommendations. We've been, I can probably talk at nauseam, and I will stop, because I know so much more about the average height that eagles hunt from, to the number of bird strikes that have happened that have been certified at the airport, to the number one thing, number one birds that get hit by planes, average height that they're hit. I mean, there's been a lot of research in this as we've been working through this plan. I'm confident that at the end of the day, when we get through this, one of the items that was going to be addressed, and will probably come out of this, will be that the bigger potential of bird strikes actually is the landfill. And when the airport was built, there was no study done for the flight patterns of the birds at the landfill. So I imagine as this whole thing comes through, we'll end up compromising, and we'll be doing a study of the bird flight patterns from the landfill and its proximity to the, to the airport, which is a bigger hazard because of the gull population, which happens to be the number one bird that strikes airplanes, and their concentration level at the landfill. So we're working through that process, we should have a final determination from the FAA on the project. Like I say, at the end of the day, if we can't get along, and we can't put fish in it, it'll still have a recreational opportunity down there for people to paddleboat, boat on, or do something else like that. Well, I'm, it's looking right now that we're going to come to some common ground on that and move forward. So as we finish up the plan review process and working with the developers, we'll be bringing you options to decide on how you want to see this project developed. I hope that clarifies the process of where we're at, and we'll have those facts and figure numbers based on, on the final design and what we think's achievable within the outlined budget we originally established for this project, just on our part. And so there's a lot of, a lot of give and take, and I think it's going to work out well. And I just wanted you guys all to know where we're at. I know there's been a lot of confusion on it, a lot of rumors on it, I've seen the emails going back and forth, and I thought this was a great opportunity just to let you know where we're at today.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Scott. We're at the bar.
At this time, I'd like to thank Scott for the meeting that we had. It was very educational, we talked a lot about what we want to do, and it makes it easier for me in talking to people, be able to explain to them what we're trying to do, and so this information is basically what I was asking for, and I appreciate it very much.
Absolutely. And like I say, if any of these other questions come up that you guys can't answer, just please refer them to me. I'd be happy to visit with them and explain where we're at in the process. Like I say, hopefully, I will be coming back in the very near future with these options for you. And, you know, on the sideline, I think it's, it's been, it's been a long time working on this project, and I, the development, I don't want to steal the thunder of the developer because they want to come and share some time with you as the council, but it's quite a development, it's quite a large dollar number that they're putting into our community. And I think from an appeal aspect of an area that has been, I don't want to say slumming blighted, but maybe not the most desirable area, my whole life of being here and able to turn that into something, I think it's something that we'll be proud of for generations, and it'll really add some eye candy to our community when people come through our community. Thanks for your support on this.
Thank you, Scott. And we'll move on down to Wyoming Community Gas Grant Program. Marla Brown.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, this last couple of weeks, I received notice from Wyoming Community Gas that their grant program was shared for, and I believe I forwarded it all to you guys, for you to share with other entities within the city of Rawlins. This is the grant program, this is not the money program that we're going to receive. So I just wanted to get this information out front of the community as well. If there are entities out there that are interested in applying for the grant, they need to be turned in by, I think, January 31st, 2020. If there's any ideas, if people want to know how to get the applications, please come into our office, we'll be happy to, to print these applications off and give them out.
Now, is this just for something within the city, not the county?
No, it could be within the county as well.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, the city of Rawlins is a consortium member of Wyoming Community Gas, and that's where we get, we're going to get the $10,000 for a community project that is our project. But this grant money is for, for other entities.
Okay. Does that exclude the city from applying? Applying for the grant, the city themselves?
No, the city can apply for the grant if you, if you have something that you'd like to apply for.
Any other questions for Marla? Councilwoman Smith?
I know at one time, we had talked about best buddies, but I thought we couldn't use that for like administration or anything, but I'm, I'm inviting Kelly to take a look at it to see if that'll help with that project.
They may be able to apply for the grant themselves as an entity.
That's what I'm saying.
Any other questions? Thank you, Marla. Now we'll go down to Department Mental Reports. Is there any questions on any of the reports? Okay. And we'll move on down to approval of the agenda for tonight. Councilwoman Oles.
Motion to approve the October 15th, 2019 city council agenda as presented.
We have a first. Councilwoman Smith, raise your hand first. We have a first and a second. Smith.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions or comments in regards to the agenda? If not, Sherry, will you open online voting, please?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on down to New Business, Approval of the Payroll. Councilman Espinoza.
I'd like to make a motion to move to approve the September 15th, 2019 through September 28th, 2019 payroll register for $219,527.83.
Second it. Councilman Bart Martinez seconds it. Do we have any questions or comments in regards to the payroll? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yeas.
And we'll move on down to Approval of Accounts Payable. Councilwoman Smith.
I move to approve the Accounts Payable Register for the period of September 27th, 2019 to October 4th, 2019, in the amount of $580,748.12.
Councilwoman Wells seconds it. Have any questions or comments in regards to Accounts Payable? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yeas.
Thank you, Sherry. And we'll move on down to Item C, the Approval of Transfer of Ownership of Retail Liquor License Number 98 from J. H. Casper Oil Company to Stinker Stores Incorporated, DVA Stinker Stores Number 215.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the city of Rawlins received two applications to transfer liquor licenses. The first one is Transfer Liquor License, Retail Liquor License Number 98 from J. H. Casper Oil Company to Stinker Stores Company, Inc., DVA Stinker Stores 215, in pursuant to Wyoming Statute 124101A. You, as the elected officials of our community, have the authority to approve this transfer. The applications have been forwarded to the Liquor Division, the Wyoming Liquor Division, and they have been deemed complete for your next action.
Okay, any questions? Bart.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the Transfer of Ownership of Retail Liquor License Number 98 from J. H. Casper Oil Company to Stinker Stores Company Incorporated, DVA Stinker Stores Number 215, for the licensing term of October 24th, 2019 to March 31st, 2020.
We have a first. Councilwoman Smith?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Do you have any questions? Councilwoman Smith?
Marla, would you refresh my memory on liquor laws? Can you hold what two liquor licenses?
So, they're two corporations.
Two different corporations.
They're two different corporations. So, so this one here will be owned by Stinker Stores Company, Inc. That's the owner of the license. The DVA is Stinker Stores 215. The next one is owned by Josh Knick Company, LLP.
It's still Stinker Stores.
Yeah.
The one is 215 and one is 213.
Correct. So it's two different, it's two different corporations that will own a license each.
Not the same people.
Well.
Probably the same people.
Probably.
But it's the corporation that owns it.
Okay.
Any questions? Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yeas.
Now we'll move on down to Item D, Transfer of Ownership of Retail Liquor License Number 111 from Monument Enterprises LLC to Josh, Inc., Company, LLP, DVA, Stinker Stores Number 213. Any other motion, questions? Councilman Durst.
I move to approve the Transfer of Ownership of Retail Liquor License Number 111 from Monument Enterprises LLC to Josh Knick Company, LLP, viewing business as Stinker Stores Number 213, with a licensing term of October 22nd, 2019 to March 31st, 2020.
Councilwoman Martinez?
I'll second the motion.
We have a first and a second. Any questions or comments? Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yeas.
Thank you. Now we'll move on down to Executive Session. Motion, Councilwoman Smith?
Okay. Let's listen to that. I move to go into Executive Session at 8:11 PM, Wyoming Statute 164452, considers the appointment, employment, right to practice, or dismissal of a public officer, professional person or employee, to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person or officer, unless the employee, professional person or officer request a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. While in the hearing in Executive Session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in Executive Session, nine, to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law.
We have a, seconded by Councilwoman Wells. Any questions or comments? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yeas.
Thank you, Sherry. We're in Executive Session.